You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, we're going to get started for Town of Branford Special Board of Finance, Special Work Session and Budget Meeting for Monday, March 30, 2020. And just want to note to the public that this meeting is being broadcast on Comcast Channel 20, the Government Channel, BCTV, and also on Facebook Live. And we appreciate everybody's compliance with the COVID-19 precautions. First on the agenda is to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Board of Police Commissioners for the following budget transfer from regular salaries $15,905 into furniture $15,905. We have a letter, Jamie or Jim, do we want to address this?
So...
Basically, this is the furniture.
Yeah, furniture for the PD.
Yeah, basically, you know, he was talking, actually, one time he met with myself and Catherine, he was talking about some of the furniture needs. And one of the things we mentioned to him is, you know, we did have some vacancies there. And if he could cover it in the current year, you know, that would be welcome. The only thing that's a little confusing to me on that is his narrative and his chart don't line up. So, but I think I would use the number in the chart, the $15,905.
$15,905, okay.
And see where he ends up.
Yep.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Been moved by Victor, seconded by Bob. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Harry. And I might note that Harry, the motto?
The damo.
The damo.
The damo, thank you, is on voicemail, on voice connection with his phone at home, and so he'll be participating via voice. Thanks, Harry. Second on the agenda is to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Board of Recreation for the following transfer from utilities, water, gas, and electric $6,000 into purchase services, repair and maintenance $6,000. Alex has submitted a request with approval of his board to reflect him for increased building and maintenance and other miscellaneous purchase services to get him through the fiscal year.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Harry. Okay, number three is to act, the following transfers on the agenda are somewhat connected to the needs, obviously, the needs of the town, but also to some of the budget requests that are in the 2021 budget. And I think from here on with the agenda, we're going to be reflecting on some of the budget needs, uses of fund balance, strategic use of debt, and trying to recycle some and repurpose some of the existing balances and other types of transfers that may benefit not only the current fiscal year, but also have a positive impact for the next fiscal year that we'll be considering later in this meeting. So, item number three is to consider and act on the following proposed resolution, resolution appropriating $500,000 for the townwide drainage improvements 2020 and authorizing issuance of $500,000 in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, of the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose, and to recommend resolution by the representative town meeting. And I have attached to the agenda are all of the resolutions, and I'd be happy to read them all for items number three, four, five, and six, unless someone wants to make a motion to waive those readings.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolutions.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Harry. Thanks, thank you, Harry. Okay, so I'll let Jim and Jamie address this. My understanding, there was a $100,000 request in the future in the 21 budget, and this actually addresses that request as well as additional drainage needs that the administration has identified.
Yes, that's correct. And the engineer has also attached a letter and some pictures as well. Essentially, he was looking at doing this, you know, $100,000 a year. And one of the things, myself and the first selectman in reviewing that, thought that the bond authorization would be better. It allows them to do more upfront. The rates are also very good right now. It provides a way of smoothing the cost through the debt service. So for all of those reasons, we thought it would be preferable to do that. And I think there's also a common theme that we talked about when this board was presented with some of the sewer authorizations as well, is that, you know, we're looking at some of our infrastructure needs, and, you know, the $500,000 will do those three areas he identified in the budget plus others. But in a town like Branford, you know, there are always going to be drainage needs, and this is a way to address them.
Thanks, Jim. Jamie, any expansion on that, or you'd like to come in at all?
Just following up, basically, from the budget hearings, and I did say that, you know, the theme that you'd see is investing in our infrastructure, and it's a continuation of that. And we have been addressing some, and as Jim mentioned, we did meet with the town engineer, had discussed not only these projects, but some other potential areas, and this was the recommendation, and I'd like to see this move forward. As we all know, keeping up our infrastructure is critical to our town in terms of, you know, the quality of life, providing services, and seeing our town grow in the future, so...
Thanks, Jamie. So, some of the streets would be the Weir Street, Thimble Island, Underpass, and Blackstone Avenue?
Yep, those are...
Three of the initial...
Three that have been identified.
Initial projects?
Initial, yeah.
And the Wharf would be the next, item number four. So, okay, we have a, I've read the resolution, is somebody...
I'll move it.
Joe.
Jeff?
I was going to move it, but I also want to say that the supporting documentation for this project is very well, it seems like this has been going on for a while, and we definitely need to move on this.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff's made the motion. Second, wait, Bob, additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye, yes.
Okay. And you can raise your hand if you have any questions, too, Harry.
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. Item number four is to consider and act on the following proposed resolution, resolution appropriating $350,000 for Stony Creek Wharf reconstruction 2020 and authorizing the issuance of $350,000 in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative town meeting.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's removed and seconded, there's discussion, there is a, we provided information about the Wharf. Jamie, did you want to expand on that, or any comments?
This was, and, you know, I, once again, the town engineer did provide some photos as well as a written narrative regarding this project. It was, you can find in your packet, it'll be attached to the minutes of the meeting. But this is to reconstruct the concrete ramp going to the town dock where the tour boats meet, as well as the gazebo that's there. There were some pilings that are identified to be in poor condition. Once again, just continue to maintain and improve our infrastructure, Joe.
Any other additional comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Okay, item number five is to consider and act on the following proposed resolution, resolution amending a resolution appropriating $5,245,000 for the Blackstone Memorial Library renovation 2018 and authorizing the issuance of $5,245,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. The purpose of the amendment is to increase the appropriation from $5,245,000 to $5,745,000, an increase of $500,000, and ratify, confirm, and adopt all prior authorizations and resolutions in connection therewith, therewithin, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative town meeting. Jim, Jamie?
Yeah, again, this, and again, it's still an estimate. I know that Blackstone was here in January, and they were updating the Board of Finance as to what their needs were. One of the things that they're contemplating, and Jamie will correct me if I misspeak, is that a total roof replacement there? And that's why some of the other aspects of painting the auditorium and stuff were put on hold. And so they've been working with Downs Construction and the architects, et cetera. Right now, the estimate is still a little rough, but, you know, looking at some of the estimates that the town engineer had, we thought that we'd, at this point, approach it with asking for $500,000. The other thing that's also related to this and some of the other resolutions is if we do have that refunding opportunity, you know, these could also be projects we could consider financing in addition to some of the other authorized unissued debt. So there are some opportunities potentially out there. And again, that is a very iconic building in Branford, and, you know, while some of us were not happy that we had to add an additional $500,000, we obviously want to maintain the investment there as well, so...
I have a question. Joe, in this wording, should that say $5,745 in the second mention of that, or not?
Sure.
Well, the first one is referencing the original, and then it's just saying that it's talking about an amendment from $5,245 to $7,450.
But in the second mentioning of the amount, it's the same amount that before the...
Section one of the resolution. Part of the line, Jim.
But that's consistent with all these other resolutions.
It is.
That's the Bond Council's way of wording it, even though it looks a little confusing, it's appropriate for them.
Well, the first one's identifying, and again, I wasn't anticipating that question, but I could double check, but typically, the first one's identifying the resolution, and then the amendment, you know, gets into, you know, changing it. So what you see on your agenda is sort of the summary of it. Let me just get to the...
I don't think we have the full resolutions.
I think, Jamie, if I just...
So if you go to item number five on the agenda...
Right.
So, if you see, so Victor, what you're referring to is the description up on the top. So if you're looking on, see item number five here?
Yes, I am.
So, that's the description, and then you get into it, they're referencing that resolution, and then they're saying in a detailed section two, the title of that resolution is amended to read as follows, and then you're getting to the $5,745. See that?
Yeah, I see it in the next paragraph, right.
Right, so what's, so when you're looking at the agenda, that's the summary of the resolutions getting amended. When you waive the reading and adopt the full resolution, it...
Yeah, I think...
The purpose of the amendment is...
So they, we take a shortcut here, even though we don't have to. If I were to read item number five in its entirety, you'd see that section two amends that original section, which increases by $500,000.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
So that's really, as long as you, and that's consistent with any of the other changes we've done.
Okay.
So that's really, that's, it's there, and it's, the agenda actually just provides the overview of it.
All right, thank you.
So, any, we haven't moved this, I don't believe. You had a question, Victor, you okay with that?
I'll move it, Joe. I'll second it.
Right, they're moved and seconded, is there a discussion? I think...
This is based on the same presentation we heard in January from the board, from Karen.
That's correct.
About the roof, yeah.
Yeah, that was identifying a need, and then there'd been some, some working on some of the estimates as well since then.
I'm good.
Wasn't it a lower number? I thought it was a bit lower than that, than the 500?
It was a little, it was a little bit lower, but again, you know, they're trying to build in some contingencies. The estimate that I saw was more like in the low 430s, but, but again, another $70,000, you know, once they're working on this and doing some other things, doesn't seem, doesn't seem unreasonable, and so that's why we went with the $500,000 ask.
Bob, when that presentation was done, keep in mind, that was right at the beginning when the architect was engaged and the structural engineer to come up with a plan after they redid further investigation, they knew they had to do, address some issues with that rear roof. Now, keep in mind, it's the north dome, on the north end of the building. So where, they may have put out a number early on, that didn't take into consideration the full scope of rebuilding that roof, which, after the structural engineer and the architect reviewed it further, that's going to be their recommendation. There's the steel beams that are in there, and it supports terracotta that is, basically builds that arch. So it's very complicated, and that initial number, I think, was if they could have just rebuilt without touching that structure underneath. But I think that it was quickly realized that they're going to have to get, if they're going to address it, they're going to do a full roof replacement and take that entire structure off and rebuild a new roof. Makes sense, makes sense.
Okay, other questions? Motion's been made and seconded. All, Harry, you have any questions? Okay, if not, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Harry. Okay, item number six is resolution to consider and act upon the following proposed resolution, resolution amending a resolution appropriating $6 million for the Town of Branford Townwide Energy Conservation and Modernization Program and authorizing the issuance of $6 million in bonds, lease, or other financing of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. The purpose of this amendment is to increase the appropriation and bond authorization from $6 million to $6,200,000, an increase of $200,000, and ratify, confirm, and adopt all prior resolutions and authorizations in connection therewithin, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative town meeting.
I'll move that.
Okay, been moved and seconded.
I'll second it for a discussion.
Jim, you have any comments on that?
Sure. Basically, since this was an original bond resolution for the $6 million, we have an amendment to take it to 6.2. However, the plan is not to do any additional bonding for it. The revenues for the project, we issued $5,030,000 in general obligation bonds, we had a 0% utility loan for $500,000, and the grants came in higher than original estimates. So the project had revenues, income, of $6,123,93. And so to bridge that to $6.2 million and to do two projects that were identified in the requested budget, and those two projects are replacing lights at the turf field at the high school and also at Vets Park, it allows us to basically take care of those projects with a transfer from fund balance of $79,607. And so, so we have really two actions. One is to increase, approve that resolution, and then the other is, in my letter, there's, it shows that transfer out of the fund balance into a transfer into the project, and then I have a resolution also to incorporate that general fund transfer into that. So essentially, we're continuing energy conservation efforts, LED lights obviously use less electricity than the halogen lights that were there, and we're able to do that with just an additional $79,000 from the fund balance without having to borrow money for that.
Thanks. Questions from Jim? A lot of moving parts here.
A lot of moving parts, yes.
This is just the beginning for tonight, but it's a, it's a positive, it's been a very good project, and so, other questions from Jim on this, this item number six, which basically authorizes the expenditure side of it? And if motion's been made and seconded, with no additional questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you, Harry.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. We're going to go on to item number seven, which is to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Finance Director for the following budget transfer and resolution. It's two transfers, one is from fund balance $79,607, transfer to municipal facilities fund, there'll be a transfer out for the same amount, seven, I'm sorry, should be the same amount, $79,607.
Right.
And the second related would be on the municipal facilities fund, which would author, again, authorize the expenditure, transfer in of $79,607, and a corresponding expenditure authorization, energy performance contracts for $79,607. Somebody want to move those?
I'll move it.
Second it.
Bob, it's moved and seconded by Victor. Any additional comments on that?
There's a resolution to increase the general fund budget. Then you have the resolution to increase the general fund budget.
Yeah, I'll do these separate. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and I'll read Jim's resolution here. Resolve that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM a transfer out of $79,607 to the municipal facilities fund to fund turf field lighting projects through the energy conservation project. This transfer out will be funded from undesignated fund balance and increase the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget from $115,519,387 to $115,598,994. So somebody want to move that?
I'll move it, Joe. Second.
Been moved and seconded by Bob. Discussion. Again, this is the corresponding authorization with the transfers we just did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Okay, item number eight is to consider and if appropriate approve various transfer requests and resolutions from the Finance Director. And before I turn it over to Jim, as I mentioned, I'll read through these, I'll read the various resolutions here, and again, it's designed to take care of things that are appropriately expended either in this year's budget or next year's budget. By authorizing some of these transfers today, we will, again, modify the budget request for the 21 budget. Jim, you want to give a highlight on these?
Yep, glad to, okay. Yeah, as you indicated with the other things, there's a lot to unpack here. So the first, so you just did a resolution for $79,607 out of fund balance. This continues that trend to support the 2021 tax requirements. So here, we're looking at taking $309,950 from fund balance, and we've identified some items that were in the capital request and also in the operating request. And so the $20,000 was for the supply pond dam, $95,000 for the road at Parker Park, $39,950 for the Piscata Brook, various improvements to bollards, the paths, et cetera. And then in IT, we've identified in total about $155,000 of IT projects resulting to a lot of like one-time software purchases, licensing fees, et cetera. So the first item basically piggybacks on the energy conservation as well, and then increases the budget up to $115,908,944, recognizing the additional $309,950 from fund balance.
Okay, so maybe we'll take these one at a time, that way we can, we can absorb them.
Yep.
Again, we've seen these, as Jim pointed out, these, these are requests that are primarily in the, they are all in the new budget year, and so we feel that they're worth funding, but it was appropriate to take it out of fund balance. So the, the transfers would be from fund balance, $309,950, into, transferred, these are all transfer outs, the supply pond dam, $20,000, the Parker Park, $95,000, the Piscata Brook initiative, $39,950. It would also include purchase services for IT of $38,394, technology acquisitions of $47,653, and software of $68,953, for a total of $309,950. So why don't we move on that transfer from and to?
I'll move it, Joe. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, thank you, Harry. Then the resolution would, again, increase the budget, so that resolve that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation from, from, not form, from undesignated fund balance, $309,000, $309,950 to various capital items and technology needs, this appropriation increases the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget from $115,598,894 to $115,908,944.
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by Victor.
Second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. So the next request is for a phone system, which is new, and the resource inventory, which is, again, part of the budget request. Jim, did you want to touch on that?
Yeah, the resource inventory was basically, that's permitted by statute, encouraging conservation commissions to do that. They were looking for $10,000, they were spreading it out over three years. What this does is takes $10,000 out of contingency and collapses that request so that all the $10,000 is funded in one year. That would allow you to reduce the request by one-third of that, to $3,033. The other item is for the phone system, that was not identified in the budget, although that's something that the IT director was, was looking at. You know, our phone system is on the older side, it does work. However, over the last few weeks, with the initiative to exercise social engineer, social distancing, and having folks work from home, the departments that have, which, like the fire department primarily, has a newer phone system, they could actually plug it in at home, it's just like they're here. So like, like today, when you got Irene, Irene picked it up from home and then sent me an email because she can't transfer the call.
Right, right, right.
You know, so, but this would be a way to do that, and so, you know, in this environment, it kind of identified, you know, some of our weaker areas, and we thought, you know, maybe this is a good environment to, to fund this now. The $50,000 out of contingency leaves our contingency balance at $78,969. I discussed this with the first selectman as well, and, and he supports this. In the backup, what I did is the italicized, I asked the IT director to write something for me, I put in italicize, those are her words, not mine, so you could see where she's given you a, you know, some of the upgraded capabilities, and she was talking about updating our phone system, you know, and stagger it at a time, but, you know, based on what we're experiencing now, it kind of makes sense to do that, the way the conference calling works, the plug and play, and again, having the benefit of operating at home as if you're actually at your desk. And again, having the benefit of operating at home as if you're actually at your desk.
Okay, additional questions on this request?
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved and seconded. Jim, what'd you say the contingency balance was?
It would be $768,969 with these two items.
Okay.
Jim, say again?
Sure, $768,969.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Let me read this. It'd be from contingency, $50,000, transfer out capital fund, resource inventory of $10,000, and transfer out to capital fund for phone system, $40,000, for a total of $50,000. Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item is Stony Creek Dock. Transfer request from restroom trailer, $22,079, into Stony Creek Dock, $22,079. Jim, any?
Yeah, and this one is more of a standard redesignation of funds. You know, the restroom trailer has a balance of $22,079. You add a request for the Stony Creek Dock of $22,000, we're just moving it to $22,079, and creating an appropriation in the current year for the Stony Creek Dock.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved and seconded by Victor. Moved by Bob, seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Harry. Okay, we've taken care of, have we taken care of this next one, Jim? The bond authorization?
You did, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all set.
Yep.
There's additional explanation that Jim had for the Stony Creek Wharf, which we already passed. Use of self-insurance funds to reduce OPEB liability. James?
Okay, I'm just going to go back in a little bit of time on this one. Last January, I'm sorry, a year ago, January 2019, one of the things we were talking about is looking at the self-insurance fund balance and trying to figure out what might be the best use for some of those balances at that time. I discussed the concept of using a little over $5 million at that time to reduce the OPEB liability. You guys concurred and voted that, you concurred with that recommendation, and that's what we did. It kind of follows some of the conversations that I know you've had as a board, and I know you've gotten some letters in your correspondence. And, you know, one of the letters talked about two fund balances. They talked about the general fund balance, and they also talked about the medical self-insurance fund balance. Well, that was based on a 2018 audit, so that didn't capture the $5 million you guys would have done in January of '19, because that would be fiscal year '19. And when we all, myself and this board and the RTM, when we talk about fund balance, we're all talking about what are good uses for it. Tonight, you see some uses for it are reducing the tax requirements in next year's budget. Historically, we've used fund balances to reduce liabilities. So this is in that reduced liability theme, but it also has the added benefit, at least temporarily, of reducing some of the OPEB requirements in next year's budget. So when the 2019 audit came out, a couple key numbers. The liability in the OPEB trust fund was six point, and round number, $6.7 million. The medical self-insurance fund balance was 13, and round number is .4 million. Fiscal year '20, where our third-party administrators are projecting a eating into it by about $476,000. One of the things that we're looking at in next year's budget is funding claims at 97%. Now, let's say all of those things were to happen, and they never happened as perfectly as projected, then we would be looking at roughly $5.7 million that would be in the self-insurance fund after this transfer. What that does, however, is from the town side, it allows us to make a $436,000 reduction in what we're asking for for OPEB, because we're not funding that liability anymore that's being amortized. I think it's important to emphasize, because I know folks may look back at this, is that this was based on a '19 audit. We all know that the markets have done different things since then, and one of the elements is, you know, when you look at the change in some of the values, we may be funding a piece of this liability in the future. One of the things the actuary talked about was using five-year smoothing in the OPEB trust, as we do with the pensions. The reason you do that is it helps moderate your contributions, because you're recognizing one-fifth of the gains and one-fifth of the losses. So at this point, I can't tell you what next year's unfunded accrued liability will be. But at this point in time, the 6.7 will reduce that. If you didn't do this, then you wouldn't basically be adjusting next year's budget for the OPEB contribution. Or if you did, it probably would be out of your policy, funding roughly 80% of the required contributions. But nevertheless, interest rates are very, very low now, and so you're getting some of the actuarial benefits of putting this into the OPEB trust and reducing the liability, which is consistent with your use of fund balance, to sort of summarize again.
Thanks, Jim. Could you just go over the request, specifically the dollars?
Yes, the request would be to take $6,771,421 from the Medical Self-Insurance Fund and move that into the OPEB trust fund.
And that'll leave a fund balance in the Medical Self-Insurance Fund of what?
If all goes well, at the end of fiscal year '21, it would be $5,679,482.
And that will be in the Medical Self-Insurance. And as far as the OPEB, that'll increase that amount to what?
Well, initially, it'll increase it by the $6,771.
To a total?
However, the market's going to be changing. So you would, it probably would be close to $30 million.
In the OPEB?
Yeah.
Right.
And again, the values are changing, so.
Okay. And you've discussed this with the actuaries, and obviously, we've talked about it, and also with the, we have a TPA that gives you assistance with regards to medical?
Yeah, on projecting, on projecting the medical, yes. The actuary on the OPEB. And then we also will be faced with the decision of how to ease that into the OPEB, once it's in the trust, how to put it, how to allocate it.
How to put it to work.
How to allocate it, yes.
Right, okay. That's for another day.
Yes.
Okay. Questions on this request? It's a good financing move, we believe. Gentlemen, questions?
I'll second.
Victor's moved it. Victor moved it. Jeff seconded this request and transfer. I don't really have a resolution in front of me, but.
No, last time, you basically concurred with the decision to go forward.
So, questions from you folks? Okay. So our resolution is to move $6,771,421 from the Medical Insurance Trust, Medical Self-Insurance Fund, to the OPEB trust fund. That's what the resolution formally will say, something to that fashion. Additional questions? Harry, you all set?
I'm all set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
And one of the last requests from Mr. Finch for tonight is miscellaneous cleanups for Fund 700. So there's a request to move, again, to kind of recycle some dollars for other purposes. So from the Parker Park mower, $200, from the DEP Long Island Study, Engineering Study of $172 for table drive, DPW design, $1,893. Fire Department Exhaust, $3,067. Generators at fire, $1,531, for a total of $6,863,000.
Dollars.
Six thousand, I'm sorry, $6,863 into field renovation at Recreation, $200. Supply pond dam repairs, $2,065. And cardiac monitors at fire, $4,598, for a total of $6,863.
I'll move it.
Removed by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry.
Aye.
Okay, all set. Next is item number nine, which is the Budget Work Session. So we'll transition to reviewing the budget, and our goal is to, as in the past, to review each budget and recommend a budget for the new fiscal year. We know that this year, things are a little different with the executive orders, and also the COVID-19, and all the precautions, and the changes in public meetings and such. So we're trying to be as open as possible tonight. After we recommend this budget tonight, it will be posted on the Branford website. They'll be available for comments, and that will be coordinated through the Selectman's Office and the Finance Department. So just get organized here for a second. Hello? Hi, Harry. Yeah, I'm just getting organized here. So, so the request that came before to board, and we had the public hearings last week, and we heard requests for budget for 2021 of $121,434,765, a 5.1% increase requested of, in totaling $5,915,000. That equated to a mill rate of 30.16, or a 1.1 increase in the mill rate. And we have deliberated after the public hearings and have some recommended changes. Our goal is to understand the impact of the COVID-19, as well as the other capabilities of the town, in order to make the budget as acceptable as possible for the citizens. As in the past, we will go through the budgets and pass each, pass each department. We'll start with the Board of Ed initially, as we have in the past. So we'll go to page 54 of the budget. Budget request was $59,542 and $232.
I'll move it, Joe.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded by Charlie, moved by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next, we'll look at the Board of Ed capital, which is on page 71 of our budgets. There's a total request of $1,338,000, and the Board of Finance would be recommending I would go, I'll go through these on the total, on the equipment and services. Request of $448,000 would be approved, would be recommended. We would not recommend the architectural study for J.B. Slaney, that we take that out. We would also take out the air conditionings for the elementary schools at this time. So that would be a reduction of the capital items of $450,000 out of this request. And we would also reduce the, out of the general fund, we'd also reduce the lighting for the turf fields by $200,000, because we funded those alternatively earlier in this meeting.
Correct.
So the total is $650,000 reduction, of which $450,000 will impact the general fund of '21.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff. Somebody want to second that?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Sorry, Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of the Board of Ed. We will do the other special funds? Yeah, so we'll do the special funds now, just to round everything out. And those are on pages, looks like 62, I believe?
61 for adult.
61. Yeah, thanks, Jeff. So on page 61, we have the Adult Education Budget, revenues of $68,500, and expenditures of $68,500. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Been moved by Victor, seconded by Charlie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Harry. Second is School Age Childcare, revenues, estimated revenues of $550,175, expenditures of $522,053. Excuse me, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go back through the town departments, and.
Page 10.
Page 10 would be our legislative. And as I mentioned in prior year, as in prior years, the board has met separately and conferred with the First Selectman's Office and the Finance Director to come up with some recommended changes to the budget requests, which you've seen tonight and earlier in the meeting. And then we've been able to move through these rapidly to some extent tonight, but it doesn't mean that we haven't looked at each one of these budgets and believe that what we're recommending is in the best interest of the town. Legislative budget, $18,088 request, no recommended changes.
Good.
Move it.
Been moved and seconded. All, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lisa, thanks, Harry. Lisa, you're okay with me not calling out who seconded, or would you like me to do that?
Um, my guy.
You got it?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Next is Executive Budget Request is $373,575. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next is Board of Finance, $92,847. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Finance Department. Request is to increase office supplies by $1,000. So the request, the recommended budget would be $479,433. The request is to pay for some new checks because of the system upgrade.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff, seconded by Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next is Assessor. Request is $451,679. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Thank you. Board of Assessment Appeals, $19,228 request, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff, seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is the Tax Department, recommended increase of $2,500. Do you have a new number for that, Jim, with budget?
Yeah, it's $277,97.
$277,97 would be the recommended budget, increasing the Professional Development line item by $2,500 to support tax system upgrade and associated costs with that.
I'll move it. So that's a new category, correct?
That is a new category, yes.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. I think it was seconded by Bob. Jeff? Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next budget is Town Clerk. Request is $268,321. No recommended changes.
Move it.
Been moved by Victor, seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next budget is Labor Relations, $62,500. No recommended changes. Page nineteen?
We gotta go to eighteen, Joe.
Did I skip one?
Yeah. Legal Services.
One got by me, huh? Okay, Legal Services, request is for $450,000. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Harry. Next is Labor Relations, $62,500. No recommended changes.
I'll move it. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next budget is Probate Court. Request is $12,850. No recommended changes.
I'll move it. Second.
Been moved and seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Elections, $175,022. No recommended changes.
I'll move it. I'll second it, Joe.
Been moved by Harry and seconded by Jeff. Thanks, Harry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Planning and Zoning, $321,242. No recommended changes.
I'll move that. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next budget is Zoning Board of Appeals, $9,057. No recommended changes.
I'll move it. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next budget, Economic Development, $17,035. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Charlie, seconded by Harry. Are you okay with a second, Harry? Okay.
I'm okay, as long as Charlie can.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Inland Wetlands and Natural Resources, $133,944. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Been moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next budget is Municipal Buildings, $1,605,541. Million, million six, five forty-one. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next budget is Branford Cable Television, $13,100. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Questions been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. The next budget is IT, Information Technology. Request was $1,442,08. We're recommending three adjustments. Reduce purchased services by $38,394. Reduce technology acquisitions by $47,653. And reduce software request by $68,953. That would reduce the request by $155,000, if I'm not mistaken. The budget will be $889,208. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
So we've reduced that budget by $155,000 entirely, entirely due to the reallocation to this year's budget out of fund balance, as we described earlier in the meeting.
Move, Joe.
Been moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is, let's see...
Page here.
Page twenty-nine will be Human Resources. Request is $313,828. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved.
Second.
Been seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next budget is Police. Request was for $7,45,300. Recommending we reduce that budget, the other fuel line item, by $3,000. So that revised budget would be $7,42,300.
I'll move that.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next is Police Service. I'm sorry, Police Special Detail Service. It would be $525,000. No recommended changes.
I'll move that. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next is Fire. Request is for $6,675,982. Recommended reduction of $500 on other fuel, which would bring that fire protection budget to $6,675,482.
I'll move it. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next budget is Building Inspection and Enforcement, $194,119. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Harry, you're all set with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Next is Animal Control, page thirty-six. Transfer out of $151,376. No recommended changes.
I'll move it. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next is Public Works. Request of $2,484,204. Recommended, we reduce the other fuel by $10,000, which would make that budget $2,474,204.
I'll move that. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is Water Pollution Control Authority, page thirty-eight. Transfer out of $600,000. No recommended changes.
Move it. Second.
Been moved by Harry. Jeff, you want to second that?
Sure, second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Solid Waste Management and Recycling. Request of $3,381,686.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Engineering, $388,311. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved, seconded by Harry. Discussion?
Joe, can I just ask if anybody knows, on page forty-two, what is MS4 compliance?
That's the stormwater permit.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Jim. Excuse me. Thanks. Next is Human Services.
I don't think we had a vote on it.
What's that? We didn't vote on it?
Do we have a vote on it?
I think, I think, you know what? We, it was made and seconded. You had a question, we didn't vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, thanks, Charlie. Thanks, Harry. Thanks, Shirley. Okay. Page forty-one is Human Services. Transfer out of $1,072,346. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
I'll move it.
Moved in, Harry, you're okay with a second?
Fine.
Seconded by Harry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Human, next, I'm sorry. Next is Elderly Services, $434,691. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is East Shore Health, $269,722. No recommended changes on this.
I'll move that.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next budget is Recreation. Request is $1,218,396. We have some recommended changes for that budget. Reduce the regular wages by $46,571. Reduce that requested position and increase the seasonal part-time by $22,167. That would bring that budget to a new total of $1,193,992.
I'll move that revised number.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Young Park Commission will do it, I guess, zero budget, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll move it. Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Next budget is Parks and Open Space. Transfer out of $26,800. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Charlie, seconded by Jeff.
Yep.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is Docks and Recreational Facilities, $20,192. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Been moved, and Harry, you can second this one?
Sure.
Okay. Seconded by Harry, moved by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is Public Celebration, $35,219. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Bob.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Conservation Commission. Request is $11,675. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved and...
I'll second it, Joe.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next is James Blackstone Memorial Library, $1,488,962. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
By Victor, seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next budget on page fifty-one is Willoughby Wallace. $250,268 is the budget. No recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Second.
Been moved and moved by Jeff, seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Principal Debt Service. Request, and original request is $6,558,668. Recommending an increase of bond payments for interest at $240,000 to bring that line item up to $440,000, and a reduction in issuance costs of $40,000. That would bring that budget to a total of... Well, the total principal and interest is $9,433,707. Say that again, Jim?
The total of the principal and interest would be $9,433,707.
Okay. That's fine. So we don't need to vote on those individually?
Well, you could, and then the debt service principal is unchanged. It's the debt interest with the, as the $200,000 net.
Gotcha. Okay. Right. Okay, so the change was on the, you have the issuance costs within the interest side as well, correct? Okay. So the two budgets, why don't we, we'll do it, we'll do them together. You got principal and, the principal is $6,558,668. The interest was $2,675,39. And for a request of $9,233,707. And Jim, that revised amount, again, is?
Okay, so you increased the, the interest, so that's $2,875,039.
Yeah.
Combined, it's $9,433,707.
Okay. All right, that's our number.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jim. Next, the next budget is Pensions and, I'm sorry. Yeah, we already did the Board of Ed, so it's Pensions and Contributions. Page fifty-five. Request is $5,446,424. And no recommended changes.
I'll move it. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next budget is Employee Group Insurance. Request is $7,389,656. Recommending reductions in that two line items. The health insurance premium reduced by $346,913, and, which is reflective of the, the 97% of claims that we have talked about previously. And the retiree health insurance would be reduced by $436,000. The OPEB, again, because of our, our funding, out of fund balance into that, that trust fund. So the revised line item would be, I'm sorry, the revised total would be $6,6,743, $6,606,743.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Okay, next is municipal insurance. Request is $2,282,567. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is contingency. $825,558. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll go to the capital items. And I'll run through the, the detail on that. On page 68. Beginning on page 68 and carrying over to page 70. So, in summary, the request was $7,198,593 for the, for the town portion of the capital request. And we're reducing that amount down to $4,277,842. I'll go through the details on that. We would not, under equipment and services, request for coastal resiliency fund of $306,000. We would not recommend that. That would be zero. We would reduce the revow from $75,000 to $60,000. We would take out the conservation inventory request of $33,333. We funded that alternatively earlier this meeting, in this meeting. We would reduce the fire sinking fund from $300,000 to $280,000. We would reduce the ambulance sinking fund from $125,000 to $100,000. We would, let's see, what else? We would reduce the vehicle replacement at GGB by $7,500. And we would reduce the administrative office furniture for the counseling center by $14,468. Under buildings, we would reduce the moisture mitigation.
You missed the DPW.
Yeah.
What's that?
I think you missed the DPW. 225, we recommend $200,000.
Oh, okay, thanks. That's Republic Works?
Correct.
The sinking fund on that would be reduced from 200, from $225,000 down to 200. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
It's fine print. So that subtotal is $2,345,342. The, under buildings on page 69, we'd reduce the moisture mitigation at the police department by $50,000. Under buildings, we would reduce the, take the debt out, which was a debt request of $2,500,000 for the animal shelter. Knowing that that's, we would invite them back at the request of the first, first selectmen to discuss that further. Again, it's debt, so that we've just pushed it out at this point in time, the actual request. Under facilities-
Joe, and then back up one. Town buildings, HVAC. We reduced it by $15,000.
15,000, I got it, yeah. Okay, the, the GGB would be reduced from $25,000 to $10,000. So that subtotal would be $220,000. Under facilities, we would reduce the foot park tennis court renovation from $175,000 to $97,500. And the LEDs for, at Vets Park, we reduce that $75,000 down to zero. That's being funded elsewhere in the energy conservation, I believe.
Correct.
Under infrastructure-
We have Parker Park.
How about Parker Park?
Parker Park, thanks, guys. Parker Park driveway, we do step by $95,000 down to zero at this point.
We did that. Didn't we fund it in another place?
I don't think so.
Not that.
Not that one?
No.
No. What's that?
Parker Park driveway, we didn't fund it up there.
No, that was funded out of fund balance. That was funded out of fund balance? Okay, thank you. Lost track of all of these. There's a lot of moving parts, as Jim has said. Okay, infrastructure. $39,000 for Piscatac Brook is, is down to zero because we're funding that out of fund balance. The drainage improvements, reduce that by $100,000 because we're increasing that project by $500,000 under the debt service. Reducing the supply pond repairs by $20,000 because it's funded out of fund balance. The Sterling Creek wharf is reduced because that's going to be a debt. Shows up as debt in the next line. And the local traffic authority projects gets reduced from $25,000 to $15,000. On page 70, continuation of the infrastructure, the reduction of Sterling Creek dock replacement because we funded that out of fund balance, about $22,000. I believe that covers all of the capital items. The one thing I should point out, because I, if some folks are watching, is the coastal resiliency fund. The reason that reduction occurred was, it was also budgeted on page 59 as a transfer out. And it was also in the capital plan. We wanted to put it in the capital plan, but I had also budgeted there. So coastal resiliency is not getting cut. It was just in there in two different places. It's rare that you make a mistake, Mr. Finch.
He likes to double them.
It was a good, it was a good mistake. Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's not a reduction. It's just it was eliminating the duplication. Correct. Okay. Thanks. So that would bring the capital projects for the town, reduction of $1,260,751 to a total for that, for the capital project of $2,615,842. The lease, we need to cover the leases on this, Jim, or is that included, all inclusive? Yeah, you have the appropriations. You have the $137,000 and $95,000 for- Correct, yep. So those, I think we're, those are included in those, those details or we need to vote on this separately? I would vote on these separately. And this is the, the amount that's going into the, the lease fund. When you do your resolutions, you're doing the gross-up because that's what's authorized in this. These are the annual contributions into the lease fund to support future leases. Okay. So, so we want to appropriate these, what pages are those on? Are those? They're on page 59. Page 59, okay. So we have the two lease funds. Who else will take care of those? For the, the lease fund for the town, $37,000. And the lease fund for the board of ed, $97,000. I'll entertain a motion to accept those with no changes.
So move it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's all of the general fund budgets that we've covered. That total expenditure for the town, including the board of ed, budget would be $118,238,443. That represents a reduction in the requested amount before the board of finance of $3,196,322. And from there, I think we'll move to the other special funds. Starting on page 60, we have open space fund. Expenditures of $60,842. Self-balancing fund. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. We took care of adult ed and the child, the school-aged child. Budgets, so we'll go to page 63. Which is the sewer assessment fund.
Joe, do we do board of ed special funds?
We, we did those earlier. We're all set with those. The two funds, we took care of those. The adult ed and the, the, the school-aged childcare. Those are both taken care of. Sewer assessment fund expenditures of $14,926. No recommended changes.
Move it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Sewer utility fund. Expenditures, no recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Page 66, animal control fund. Expenditures of $367,026. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is human services fund. Expenditures of $1,643,346. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Harry, thanks. And I believe that takes care of all of the special funds that we needed to act on. Is that correct, Mr. Finch?
Looks like it.
Okay, so we will be adopting resolutions, the, and to just summarize it, and we'll summarize again, that the expenditures are $118,238,443. And with those proposed changes and some of the other recommendations, adjustments in revenue and fund balance, we believe that the, we'd be adjusting the mill rate at small amount in the downward position. So we will recess for a few minutes while the finance director is able to prepare the resolutions and some of the final summaries. Okay, we're going to resume and go through the resolutions in order to finalize our recommended budgets. First resolution will be resolved that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $59,283,962 to the board of education. Operating budget plus capital for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I'll move that resolution.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $58,954,481 for all other town departments for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I'll move that, Joe. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolve that the board of finance recommends, sorry, resolve that the board of finance hereby passed the following budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Board of education operating budget, $58,828,962. Board of ed special ed, zero. Board of ed, board of education capital and leases, $455,000. Subtotal, board of education, $59,283,962. Town departments, $58,954,461 for a total of $118,238,443.
So move it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next at the board-
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Next, resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $60,842 to the open space fund budget for fiscal year 2020, 21.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $14,926 to the sewer assessment fund for fiscal 2021.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $68,500 to the board of ed special fund budget for fiscal year 2020, 21.
So move it.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $522,053 to the board of ed daycare fund budget for fiscal 2021.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $4,607,967 to the wastewater treatment plant budget for fiscal year 2020, 21.
I'll move it, Joe.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $367,026 to the animal control fund budget for fiscal 2020, 21.
So move it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Harry? Okay, resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $1,643,346 to human services special fund budget for fiscal 2021.
I'll move it, Joe.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $328,000 to lease fund budget for fiscal 2021.
I'll move that.
Motion's been made by Bob. Seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Harry. Final resolution, resolve that the board of finance recommends to the RTM an salary increase of 2.5% for the registrar voters for each year of their two-year term of office.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so just for a recap here, the, the requested expenditures were $121,434,765. We've adjusted those requests downward by $3,196,322. That would equate to a total budget of $118,238,443, which represents a $2,719,056 increase over the current year budget, which is a three, a 2.35% increase. The board of finance, that's our recommended budget. And we will, again, meet sometime in May to set the mill rate and finalize any budget, budget considerations or motions that we have to do at that time. And we will also adjust any revenues as appropriate. For now, the estimated revenues to offset the $118,238,000 worth of expenditures is estimated total revenues of $14,142,457. That's represented by interest and penalty on, interest penalties on back taxes of $1,516,000, state and federal grants of $3,085,000, department receipts of $5,820,000, and fund balance brought forward of $3,720,000, which is an increase of $895,736. So we've allocated monies out of fund balance in order to help offset the, any types of tax increase. With a net grand list and an estimated $3,680,000, I'm sorry, $3,680,000, an increase of $115,000, that would equate to a mill rate of 29.04. It's a reduction of 3/10 of a mill. And it represents a minus 1% as far as a mill rate. We're also considering and estimating a collection rate of a little less than prior years, from, down from 98.35 to 98. We believe that, that will, will adjust for any- We believe that that will, will adjust for any, any reduction in tax collections that we might anticipate. So with that, I'd like to thank the Board of, Board of Finance, and the clerk, and the cable folks, Henry and the folks on the cable TV for broadcasting and assisting us in this time, time of need. Jamie, you have any comments?
Joe, thank you, just want to thank the board for once again putting the time in and really coming up with a budget that meets our obligations, continues to provide services to our residents while certainly being mindful of the tax burden. Like to thank our finance director, Jim Finch, who's been, once again, did a tremendous job in as we guide through this and the coming up. And certainly Assistant Finance Director, Catherine Lambaca. You know, Catherine is the one who puts all this information and compiles it all for us and keeps track of it, so I just want to thank her for her efforts. And, you know, this year's going to be a little bit different, we know. I think, Joe, you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the governor's executive order, which may, will be changing the process as we move forward. We're still working on that, how that'll look and the process, but just for the residents out there, this budget is currently on the, on the website, and now the revised and proposed budget that you put forward tonight will be put on the website as well, and eventually we'll have a email address where the residents can provide comments prior to its adoption. But we'll put out a press release when that is up and ready, and lay out the process as we move forward. So, thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jamie, and again, I'm, the board members may want to say something, but just thank Jim and Catherine and Lisa and Henry and all folks that have contributed to this, and the department heads for putting together good budgets, and, and also to folks that, that accepted the revised process that we had, or hopefully we're being as transparent and, and open as possible, and we want everybody to be safe and look forward to the ending of this COVID-19. In the meantime, we want everybody to be safe and follow the guidelines at the CDC and DPH and the town of Branford, so, thank you. Comments from the board members? All right, thank you, with any, no other business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Harry.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.